I don't know why you think closing NTA is the right thing. You have this power, but still you do nothing with it. I've said this before and I'll say it again. One day, you will be in the few, in the past. And we, the children of the schools that you're trying to close, we will be in the future. And you should set a meaningful example for us. You're saying, "I have power and you don't." Why, why would you take the happy home? I thought you closed schools because they're low performing. But at NTA, it's the exact opposite. We're Level 1 Plus. We're Level 1 Plus. Our school is great. So please tell me, why is the need to close our, to close our school? And don't tell me it's for Chinatown or for a neighborhood high school, because there's already a neighborhood high school. You say that Chinatown is in dire need for a high school. I've been to all possible meetings with NTA. And I have yet to see another kid, for another kid going to high school saying they need a high school in their community. I've yet to see that. I mean, I see older people, adults, come and tell that they need the high school. But I see no kids. I see these kids. These are the only kids that I see coming and saying they need a school. You have this... I don't, it's because, wait. It's because you don't put enough money into the schools. It's because you don't try as much as you tried for the selective enrollment schools. Yes, I am graduating June 15th, 2018. But that's not, but it's not about me graduating. So stop saying, "Oh, the next three classes will be able to graduate." It's not about the next three classes. It's about the school in her whole. It's about NTA as a community. But, I mean, I feel like you don't see that. I understand. I know, I know, I know that we come here, I mean, I've been here three times now, and some other of my students, my peers have. But I feel like you don't see what we see. If you were in our position, you wouldn't know what was going on. You wouldn't know how we feel. I mean, you have this empathy for us, I guess, but it doesn't, it doesn't really connect to you like it connects to us. You haven't been in the school and worked in this school how lo, how, as long as we have.
Ms. Wallace, thank you.
Ms. Wallace. Ms. Wallace, as you walk away, you have been here a couple of times before. And I'm not being kind and sentimental to you, although it may sound that way to you. I find you to be a very effective advocate for what you believe in. Hopefully, if you continue in this vein over your life's work, then you'll be a very successful person.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next speaker, please, Katherine Gladstone.
Hi, my name is Katherine Gladstone. I'm staff attorney at the Legal Systems Foundation, and here on behalf of concerned parents of NTA, Chicago United for Equity, and Chicago Lawyers Committee for Civil Rights. The proposal that you are being asked to vote on today is more than just a boundary change for NTA. This proposal will close NTA grade by grade until NTA as an elementary school is fully closed in 2024. Under Illinois law, this is a phase-out. This fact, it's an important fact that this is a phase-out and not just a boundary change. And it's an important distinction that is not mentioned in the hearing officer's report. This year's school action guidelines do not include any criteria or standards for a school phase-out. Without guideline criteria, the CEO should not have made this proposal, and this board cannot legally approve this proposal. To be clear, this plan violates the law in several other ways, and there are countless reasons this plan should not be approved. For example, NTA students will not be given the opportunity to attend a higher-performing school, as law requires. The transition plan does not guarantee a comparable level of support for NTA students, again, as law requires. And this plan was not requested and is not supported by the NTA community. We wanted to focus our comments today on the phase-out issue because it is a clear and alarming violation of the school code that board members should seriously consider before voting. It subjects the school district to a legal attack on this decision. We pointed out this issue in our comments to the guidelines. CPS ignored it. We pointed out this issue in a nearly 30-page hearing statement to the independent hearing officer for this matter. The hearing officer also ignored it. If you vote to approve this proposal, you will be closing one of the highest-rated elementary schools in CPS for the first time ever. And your approval of this plan will directly violate the Illinois school code. Before making a decision, I urge you to read our 30-page statement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, please, Speaker 18, Devon Collins.
By the way, as you come up, you're obviously a student. How many of you that are up here now are actually students at NTA?
My name is Devon Collins. I'm from NTA. I'm in the eighth grade. NTA has been done to be closed. The Inglewood community has been ignored. It's like you guys just grab us and punch us to the ground. We're strongly ignored. And Ms. Jackson, you told one of my fellow peers to go do our research on the last three graduated class. And we did, and all, 100, all of them graduated and went to OnePlus high schools and better, selective enrollment. So, thank you for letting us do that, because that proved that you were wrong. They're saying that we are not, like, illiterate or that the LD, LD community or a special ed gets our, get us to the OnePlus school. But it took more than just the students. It took the teachers. They gave up their time to help us. And like, even though I only been at NTA for 12 years, it felt like when I first got there, I was like family. And like, I was shy and they all came up to me and like grabbed me. Like, they just came up to me, just felt like I was family. And like, I look at people in younger grades, it's like my little brother and my little sister. And like, like, when you try to take away NTA, it's like you're trying to take away a family. Like, imagine like somebody coming to your house, taking away your house, and splitting up your family. Like, that's not, that's not right. And like, I just want to tell y'all that I'm strongly disagreeing with the plan.
Um, I'm gonna start off, I'm gonna start off saying that this is not right. It's not right to us. Why would you close, why would you convert our school, the elementary school, into a high school? I don't think we agree with that. Do we agree with that?
No.
We obviously don't. We see that. It's a lot of kids have that. We feel like our school should be converted into a high school. And, um, what else I want to say? Our school is Level 1 Plus. I say again, it's a Level 1 Plus, the highest, out of all the levels. Why should we feel, why should you feel that you should clo, you should convert our school into a high school? It's, our school is a predominantly black high school. I don't think, I don't think that, black school. I don't think that, um, you would close our school if it was all white school. Would you? I don't think that's right. Let me say it again. So, think about these, think about what we said, please. And take courage what we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Our next speaker, please, Speaker 21, Bobby Brown.
Good morning. My name is Bobby Brown. I'm the LSE Chair at Harper High School. I have a scripture, Ephesians 6. "For our struggle is not against flesh and blood, but against the rulers, against the authority, against the power of darkness of this world, against the spiritual forces of evil in the heavenly realms." This is plain evil that are doing to our children. Tearing their schools up, dividing them. I just don't get it. But I stand before you guys as a grandmother, as the LSE Chair, and a parent. I stand with NTA, Harper, Hope, and Team Inglewood, and Robinson. And we are tired of making, we are tired of people making profit off our childrens. They don't care. They even paying peoples to come and say that we agreed to this decision. We didn't agree to this here. Like I said, the network came to our school and told us that they had a survey of 1,200 peoples agreeing to the school. And then they said they talked to the LSE Chair. I can't recall talking to any of them. So where did they get all this information that we agreed to this? Tearing down our neighborhood, not investing in our school, disrupting our children? Each time, it's just sad that we have to come here and plead before people for our children to live. Really? Where they do that at? But the devil is a liar. We come back to take everything that the kink of worms in the Calico have taken from our children. We taking back what Satan has made for bad. God gonna turn around for his good. He's gonna get the glory out of all of this here, what's going on. Despite of what's going on, we still gonna keep on striving. Leaders are being formed right now with our children. They're gonna rise up and become better. And we thank the Lord for our children. And can y'all excuse me while I praise the God? Thank you, Jesus! Hallelujah for what's going on! Thank you, Jesus! You're the honor to finish up whatever's going on, Lord, right now. They don't have our hands. They gonna have it. And we thank you.
Thank you.
Hallelujah. Hey, glory to his name.
Our next speaker, please, Speaker 30, Nadia Mahajer.
Hi, my name is Nadia Mahajer. Ms. Ward, I wanted to address your question regarding the two REAs. Q's REA used nationally-recognized methodology that reviews the impact of the decision before it is made and offers multiple options for the decision-maker. And it recommended that this proposal is not affordable. Wiestat's REA assumed that the transition was happening and simply made recommendations on how to do it in a way that creates the least amount of damage to a community that's already being marginalized. It leaves no room for an alternative to even be entertained. I'd also like to point out that Wiestat has, um, also has a $1.5 million racial discrimination settlement from 2014. In other words, CPS hired a company with a history of racial discrimination to conduct a racial equity analysis. Another example of CPS using a non-bid process to hire a contractor to tell them what they actually want to hear. I'm also here today to express my extreme disappointment at the hypocrisy and lack of integrity that has been exhibited over the past year. And because I only have two minutes, I will just share one example. Dr. Jackson, we spoke last June on the phone after we requested a mutual contact to connect us. In our conversation, you said that Phillips and Dunbar were not an option for the South Loop community, while still admitting that Phillips is a fine institution and that, quote, "Some of the best teaching that you've seen in a long time is happening there." To admit this privately to an inquiring parent, but then to publicly advocate for South Loop that there is no viable high school option is outrageous. If the teaching is so fine at Phillips, Dr. Jackson, then why is it not a viable option for members of the South Loop and Chinatown community? Why is Phillips deemed too far for the South Loop community to commute to, but not for the Inglewood students? I wonder how you will sleep at night knowing that parents and students and community members have been ignored across the city when it comes to school-closing decisions? And how those in power will not be from the, how those in power who are not from the community are making decisions without our children's best interest in mind? And if you choose to move forward with this unjust proposal, I wonder if you will be haunted by all the sleepless nights that thousands of displaced children from NTA and Inglewood and their thousands of parents will have as they attempt to start over in a system that has proven it doesn't care about them and maybe doesn't even want them at all. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please, Elizabeth Venasta.
Hi, my name is Beth Van, I'm still, I'm an NTA parent. I'm a pediatrician and I'm an advocate for these kids of NTA and for Inglewood. I'm here to talk about community. Barack Obama recently said, "Communities have never been a given in this country, at least not for blacks." Communities have to be created and fought for. Tended like gardens, they expand or contracted with the dreams of men. Recently, I was fortunate enough to speak with Dr. Jeff Jackson briefly as she left the building before our town hall meeting started. She admitted to me that with the growth of the South Loop, we will likely need a new elementary school in the next couple of years. Think about that. Alderman Dowell has also admitted that, as well as Alderman Thompson. Now think about the community that we have built at NTA and how many decades it took to build up a Level 1 Plus school. Communities have never been a given in CPS. NTA and Inglewood communities never asked for these proposals. You have asked earlier board members about the community engagement. And Chip has cited multiple meetings. But if you read the transcripts of those meetings, there is not a single NTA parent who has supported this proposal. How different is that than Ogden and Jenner? We've never had a seat at this table. This has never been fair. Emails show, and I've given these to the board, that even before March, there were emails mustering up support for Inglewood High School. Thus, Chinatown lost the bid for the high school that they actually wanted and did have support for. And who's the dispensable community that's left for a high school to give to Chinatown? NTA. Would this have happened to a majority-white school? We know that answer. We've, like I said, we've never actually been really, truly listened to. You can read all these transcripts. We can all agree that we need a better quality high school, but there are better options to lay the vote. We can work with you. We are gracious people and we love our kids. We really will give you a better option that serves our kids, that serves Chinatown, that serves Bridgeport. Um, let us realize that the arc of, arc of the universe is long but bends towards justice. No matter what you vote, we're not going away.
Our next speaker, please, Audrey Johnson.
Good morning, my name is Audrey Johnson. I'm a parent at NTA. Uh, first of all, I just want to, uh, I don't know if I'm apologizing, but we were at, I mean, Chance Rock was supposed to come to our school on the 16th. Uh, I put that together. When we was at the city council, Chance asked to come to our school because he had an awesome job at the city council. So he, I invited him. I put it all together, me and my parents. And I only put it together because I wanted to show our students that, you know, I want to honor our students being a Level 1 Plus school. And I want to also earn them for the fight that they're doing for our school. So it wasn't about us just trying to get Chance in without your own permission. It was just something I just put together myself. And I apologize the way it was done. But if you could show us the right way to do it, please allow me to, me to honor my students for such a good job as the Level 1 Plus school. Since nobody from the Board of Education has came and honored us, please allow me to do that as well. Uh, again, I apologize for NTA for that, the way it went by. So, Janice, if you could show me the way, please allow me to do that so I can honor the students. Uh, and another thing, uh, views, I mean, I'm done. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please, 33, Hannah Ollman.
Sorry, I wasn't kind of ready after that. I was going to take the time today to prepare some carefully crafted and convincing statements for the vote, but I decided against it. I decided against it because I realized that it's not my job to convince anyone. Um, the fact that you solicited public comment on this proposal for almost a year and received 780 letters, 68 in favor of this proposal, and 712 opposed is stronger than any statement that I could make. Add to that 398 letters that were hand-delivered opposing this plan. This has been accompanied by outspoken opposition from elected officials, political candidates, statements and articles written by ex-recognized experts, numerous meetings. If the opposition and disapproval from the community at large, NTA and beyond, isn't loud and clear enough at this point, there's truly nothing I must add to that voice. So I don't have much more of statements. At this point, I just have questions, many of them which have built up over this past year. And let me state, as a mother who stands to have her sons torn between two schools after it's taken my youngest son three years to overcome his struggles with anxiety and walk into school confidently with his brother, I haven't had even one opportunity to sit with a CPS official and have my questions answered. Not even one. The community meetings are a disgrace and a sham where it is explicitly stated that questions will not be answered. That's on video. If you want to check out our Facebook page, you can see it yourself. They amount to nothing more than a venting session that stands to tear communities apart. So here's a small sampling of my unanswered questions. The closure of NTA has been propelled by complaints about long commute times. People complained of waiting up at 6:00 AM. However, the average commute times of these community members are precisely on par with the average of every other student in Chicago. Literally, maybe just four blocks longer. I don't understand the problem there. Why are these commute times considered unacceptable for South Loop communities? So unacceptable that you would dismantle a thriving school, community to remedy this problem, but then turn around and ask Inglewood families to travel twice as long by reassigning them to Phillips High School? All while four of their neighborhood schools are shuttered? Speaking of Inglewood, why is Phillips High School deemed unsafe, underperforming, and wholly unviable option for the families of South Loop and surrounding areas, but it's seen as adequate for Inglewood? Good enough for them to travel six to eight miles, too? I can't decide if CPS thinks black kids are built for tough or just simply disposable. Or perhaps it's something less harsh, like simply unworthy or less important?
Ms. Ollman.
If Phillips low-performing, low-performing and unsafe...
Ms. Ollman, if I could get your attention, please?
It is not CPS, is that not CPS's problem to fix instead of helping people evade this school and setting their school up for further failure by disinvestment? What's to be said of the 700 students that will no longer have access to swim lessons when they are among a population's most susceptible to drowning? Black students age 12 and under are five to 10 times more likely than their white counterparts to, to, to suffer a drowning incident. And it's ranked as the third-leading cause of death within this age group. If land of high schools and the option are an issue, why are we building a $62 million elementary school instead of a high school? Perhaps one that will serve a slightly smaller bounded area if needed? And with resources amounting to an estimated $79 million? Four buildings between South Loop and NTA? 4,600 empty high school seats in the area? And some of the most brilliant minds in the education landscape of Chicago? Is this truly the best option we could come up with? Lastly, I ask once again, when will our questions be answered? And let me just end with saying that this has been one of the most awful, disheartening, and tiring experiences I've had as a parent. But there's one thing we know about mothers. We tire, but we never tire out. And I just want to ask you to please excuse the typos in the document that I gave you. I got up at 3:00 in the morning to put this together. And with fresh eyes, slightly fresh eyes, I do see the typos. So, um, the remainder of my questions are in the document that you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please, Speaker 36, Maryka Boyd.
Good afternoon, my name is Maryka Boyd. I'm a 10th grader at John Hope College Prep. And I oppose the phase-out because whether you kill us slow or you kill us fast, you still kill us. Dr. Hines, you were the first inaugural president, principal at John Hope College Prep. And if you really believe in quality education and equity, you would stand for quality, sustainable community schools. You would give us the things that we need, such as cosmetology classes, AP classes, honors classes, things that we don't have. I shouldn't have came to Hope and they said, "Oh, we don't offer honors and AP classes anymore because CPS doesn't want to invest in us." You guys disinvest us, you don't want to give us the things we need. And Janice Jackson, we heard you when you said you gonna phase out our schools. We appreciate it, but it's still not enough. Whether you kill us slow or you kill us fast, you still kill us. And Chip Johnson, you were once a principal at our school. A teacher at our school. And Chip, stand up and believe, and you can't even stand up and fight for what our kids believe in. Us, our Inglewood kids, we are hurting. No one acts like they cares about us. We want, we demand sustainable community schools. We demand that our schools stay open. We stand with NTA, Hope, Robinson, Team Inglewood, and Hope. And to me, to be a student, how can I be successful if I don't have the things I need? Us kids, we drop out of school because school is not a place that we want to be and it's not fun. So I really think and I oppose the phase-out. Whether you kill us slow or you kill us fast, you still kill us.
Our next speaker, please, Speaker 37, Eiko Hivino.
Good morning, Eiko Hivino. The first, uh, we didn't call any of you as a person racist. We call this proposal racist because this would never happen to majority-white kids' school. So that's why we call this proposal racist. It's not about you as a person, it's about this proposal. So, the proposal to close NTA and Inglewood High Schools are fraudulent. Let me count some examples of lies. Lie number one, in order to justify closure of NTA, majority African-American, low-income, Level 1 Plus school, Dr. Janice Jackson and CPS have repeatedly claimed that neighborhood program students at NTA are not performing as well as are these students. It is a lie. These students standing here, they are in the 95th percentile for reading growth and 98th percentile for mass growth. It's national level. They exceeding far above the national level. You owe them a serious apology for insulting them by making a completely false statement. We have corrected repeatedly, but you again lie today. Lie number two, in order to justify closing NTA and converting it into a neighborhood high school, Dr. Ja, Dr. Jackson and CPS claim that neighborhood program students at NTA are not getting into the same high-quality high school as RDC students. It is a lie. The last year, 100% of A's graders, which is 100% neighborhood program students, were accepted to Level 1 or better high schools. No single RDC student has ever graduated from NTA yet. How you can make that comparison?
Ms. Hivino, can you...
Lie number three, in order to justify closing NTA and turning it into a neighborhood high school, Dr. Jackson and CPS have repeatedly insinuated that the currently zoned neighborhood high school, Phillips Academy, is not a viable option for South Loop residents. If Phillips is not a viable school, why CPS has designated Phillips as a receiving school for students of four Inglewood High Schools that CPS is eager to close? Let me put this in another way. That CPS mean that Phillips is not a viable option for a certain group of students, but good enough for another group of students? So, I cannot, and there's a countless of lies. And you can go to wearnta.com, check fact-check Friday. It is idiotic that we even discuss about this fraudulent proposal. I call a hold to closures of NTA, Harper, Hope, Team Inglewood, and Robinson.
Before the next speaker comes, because there are very strong points of views that are not necessarily shared by all, when you come to the mic and you want to express the information that you believe to be factually correct, that's what you have a right to do. And, and do it in a way, hopefully, that's respectful. When you specifically attack an individual member and call them liars, I feel compelled to speak out. Uh, that is wholly inappropriate. Uh, you're right, you have a right to your point of view. But as a board, we support Dr. Jackson and take a great, great offense that you would literally call her a liar. Uh, that is an unacceptable thing to do, in my judgment. And I think you took advantage of your, your, your mic to individually attack a very, very credible person who cares much about the schools as anyone sitting in here. And as a member of the board, speaking at least for the board, I will not accept you calling her a liar. Let's move on.
She didn't use the word liar.
I didn't say she is a liar.
Maybe you should ask her if she made those false statements. She can see for her...
All those statements are in record.
Were those statements made?
They're on record.
They're on record.
We'll move on to the next speaker, Speaker 44, David Brown. Our next speaker, Speaker 45, Jakia Jackson. 46, Naya Young. Please state your name.
David Brown.
Can you proceed, Mr. Brown?
I strongly disagree with the school closure. So sad, and what I'm about to say is for all the network team who came and smiled at my face at my school, you are faking phonies for the lies. The president that is sitting in front of me is black and agrees to close down schools. And even better, a group of the network team has came to my school telling me they're from Inglewood. If they wasn't lying like they lie about everything else, then they should know how hard it is to live in Inglewood and know when a school makes some kids, like me, feel like they're at home, you don't shut it down, you help the children feel better. And if you don't know how, let this freshman tell you what he thinks Harper, Hope, Team, and Robinson need. We need science laboratories, libraries, and more funding so we can make, make it out and live better. And no, I'm not trying to heal, we will fade y'all out and then kill y'all fast or slow. We will stay, we will still break apart. Now I have a new dream, I will grow up and probably one for Alderman or Mayor because I'm going to fight for everyone in my district and city or neighborhood and I will make my plan to be better than everyone, especially Chip and others who pays our own people to turn against us. Also, for the people that work and follow my plan, I will, I will become, wait, no. I will because it's just shameful. It's just shameful for y'all to stand behind a cold-hearted man who probably don't even care about y'all feelings. I say, I say, Ron, keep all schools open. If you stay at this seat, then you better be able to take this heat. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please. Please state your name.
My name, Jakiel Benson. From Paul Brooks High School, 11th grade. Um, and I'm here today for, um, it's crazy. I'm here today for, it's crazy to see that this is a voting for a school closure, but yet they're still, they putting marks around Paul Robinson and digging up the track field, but still haven't gave a vote, or yet that Paul Robinson is yet to be closed. Also, I'm here because it's crazy how you guys say y'all have votes and y'all had students and teachers and people around our community said they wanted Paul Robinson to be closed, but yet neither one of you guys have stepped foot in Paul Robinson and asked the students, should Paul Robinson be closed? Now, I am a quarterback of Paul Robinson. I'm also on the basketball team, star power forward. And sports and Paul Robinson goes a long way for me and a couple more students. Paul Robinson is a family, but more than a family. Paul Robinson is my home, and what I mean by home is I don't even stay in the Inglewood community, but I travel far just because I feel safe going at Paul Robinson. Not only that I feel safe, I'm better, I'm better being myself and I'm better being what I can be with the people I have in my environment, if you know what I mean by that. It's crazy to see that you guys want us to fail to better you guys' lives, not just to better you guys' lives, to make your church a lot better. Now, what if I was your child? Would you still vote for the school closure or would you be on our side? Just think about that. Let that sit. We fight for fully sustainable community schools.
Mr. Vincent.
And we ready to win. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please. Please state your name.
Hi, my name is Naya Young. I am in eighth grade. I currently go to NT. But I personally feel that you should not close down NT nor Inglewood. And, but I strongly disagree that you guys should turn our school into a high school.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Our next speaker, Mr. President. Speaker forty-eight, please. Nikala Ford. Erica Dunlap, please.
Hello, how y'all doing? My name is Erica Dunlap, once again. Coming up here today with my business. With the school closure, it's a disgrace. With the school building, I have no problem with y'all building a school. But when y'all build that school, make sure I have a whole police station right there. There's so much going on in that area. I mean, I literally sent in my own ass. I'm going to ATM machine. When a boy got shot in the head, that could have been me at the ATM machine. He got shot in his head while they like, I come out, I run in the bathroom, fall on the floor because the little boy outside, standing outside the store, he got shot in the head. I crawled myself into the bathroom, they hit inside that store, praying that they come get me for being a witness. Get outside, and they got the boy brain laying on the floor. So when you talk about building another school, make sure you have a lot of stuff that this school gonna take. I heard when I was sitting down, you saying that Harper, I mean, that you want to Robinson High School to talk to the kids over there. Of course you gonna go to the school and talk to the kids over there because that's the school that you want, that's the land that you want. With the other schools, you said they got three more years? They got three more years because them three schools wasn't nothing to do with the other school. I'm so proud of my daughters. I have one in the navy. Once again, I'm saying again, I'm so proud of my daughters to the day. My daughter, Michael Walls, she's not here, she upstairs because she couldn't come down here, or she could have. I'm proud of her because my daughter got a three-point, a three-point oh, grade point average in Harper High School, a school that I didn't want her to go to. But I told her, if you go right, do right in that school, I keep you in there. If you don't, I run you out. And she, and she just made me feel like I had a misunderstanding what was that school about. She got a certificate. I ain't never seen no trophy in none of my kids' grandma's schools, none of that. And she, I just got a trophy. And then all of that, she got a grade point average certificate, three-point oh.
Ms. Dunlap, can you please conclude?
My daughter got ninety-two percent. It's that fast? Ninety percent of the time, and then she ranked sixth, sixth through of ninth grade. I'm proud, I'm a proud mother. But I'm just saying, like, if you could just give the schools another chance, you know what I'm saying? Put some more textbooks in these schools and give these kids what they need and stuff like that. My daughter and a lot of other kids out here hurting, you know what I'm saying? It's a bearing on these kids. And I'm just asking my family, like, they go to another school, look for family, especially when kids out here don't have family. If you have to look up Six Oh Six Project, it's an organization. That's our organization. We give out to people who don't have it. Thanksgiving, Christmas, we definitely could. You definitely could, ma'am. You have a good night.
You too. Thank you. Our next speaker, Jeremiah Perkins, please. Moving on to Patricia Crosby. Jeremiah Trent.
Hello, my name is Jeremiah Trent, and I attend NT, and I'm in the eighth grade. As a current eighth grader and leader of NT, to see my NT family in this position is heartbreaking. And to hear they want to close down our school and change it to a high school is dreadful. NT is a Level One-plus school. Why would you want to change that? Maybe because the wealthy kids of South Loop feel like they're too good to go to Phillips. I had a great experience all my years in NT, and I want future NT students to have the same experience I had. When NT opened, it was a game changer for the community, for the community. It brought opportunities to kids who lived in the hill-icky homes, the hiller homes, and longroof homes. Many of our alumni have been so successful in their lives. So therefore, I am against the proposal to transition NT into a high school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trent. Our next speaker, please. Messiah Armster.
Good morning, everyone. I just wanted to say it's crazy how you trying to change NT to a high school because the South Loop kids need a high school. And that's crazy because most Chicago kids have to take, don't go to the neighborhood high school. They could go to another good high school in another community. Most kids don't even got to go to their community high schools. And it's crazy just because the rich need a high school. Y'all want to turn our school into one. And you didn't never ever discuss it with our students and none of that. And I find that crazy because, like, just the kids, like, in the community, it really impacted us, like, in a major way. Because, like, I got siblings that go to NT and some of them not even gonna be able to continue to go to it next year if you try and close the school. And that's crazy because most kids, like, they built their personality from NT. Like, I became the person I am today because of NT. If I would have never went to NT, I probably wouldn't even be doing what I'm doing right now. And I find that, and it's like, why do you want to, like, hurt the kids? Like, we, it's like, the whole community, I live in, I used to live in the hills and, like, everything surrounds around NT. Like, we had this fair, we had every year at NT, we have a pool and teach the kids how to swim. And like one of our parents said, most black kids don't know how to swim. And I don't want to make it a racist thing, but most of the kids in South Loop is, like, white and rich. So you want to close a Level One-plus black school, and you never close a Level One-plus white school. And like, that don't make sense to me. And I just want to know, why would you want to close a black school? And most of our students are very intelligent. Like, we do, like, we did a lot of things. We have over ninety percent percentile in math and in reading. And like, I just want to know, why do you want to close it?
Thank you, Mr. Armster. Our next speaker, Mr. President. We will have speaker number five, Zoe Fixupkind, followed by speaker number seven, Yasmin Sutherland. Speaker number eight, Tim.